November, Rollins for planning board meeting to order. We do have a CORM now. That was our concern coming up front. Going. Okay, first item on the agenda is the GAKS subdivision on Clement Road. Is the fire chief here?
No, he's in business tonight.
Are you representing him?
I am, I'm the assistant chief.
Okay, is the road agent here?
Road agent.
Okay. Okay. So, thanks for all for coming this evening. Normally what happens at these things is we'll have, we met in October, and that was our initial discussion on this. At that point, the public hearing is held on the matter. And we kind of go over the application and stuff. I always suspend a public hearing. But obviously, we've got a few more people there who are buddies here from the mailer that went out. So, you know, you're gonna have to bear with us as we go through the entire hearing process. I will open it again. What will happen tonight is the applicant is an engineer. We'll go through the application as what has transpired since since our October meeting. We'll kind of go over some of the high points and items that have come up since then and how they've been addressed. And then, I want to have a discussion about hammerheads and road twists and items like that. Then we'll go into a discussion of, you know, opening up, opening this up to public comment. So that's basically what's going to transpire. Will this be acted upon tonight? I don't know. We'll have to see, you know, how things go and questions that come up and what will have to be addressed. So, just kind of give me an idea as to what's going on. So, Chris, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, your board, again Christopher Berry, Berry Surveying and Engineering. I do have an updated set of plans. These encompass the minor revisions that we talked about with the board at the last hearing. They encompass the revisions that were requested by civil consultants, your peer review or your engineering review. We've taken the time to put together a response to both Mr. Krebs' review as well as civil consultants' review.
This was the response to the initial, that's for the board. If members of the public wanted, they can have a look at it.
I just want to have a look.
The drawing is actually right there. Is this based off of the, which plan is that, our, the CORM is based off? The plan on that we saw at the first meeting?
Yeah, so what's transpired? What's transpired? The last thing we're passing out are the waiver requests. The waiver requests that were itemized by both your planning, contract planner, as well as civil consultants.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So, at the last board meeting, we went through John's letter concerning items of completeness and where we stood in relation to the regulations set by the subdivision regulations as well as the zoning regulations for this area of the town. And we went through each one of those items line by line to determine what the board wanted to do with those. And we agreed to make the modifications to the plans that would be required at that time. At the same time, the board unanimously agreed that the plans, as well as the stormwater analysis and the stormwater treatment analysis, would go to civil consultants, Jay Stevens, out of their office for what we call an engineering peer review. And he takes your regulations and our plans and he makes sure that we're designing the project to those regulations, as well as designing to current engineering standards, current stormwater standards, things of that nature. We received his review back last Thursday and we promptly started making modifications to our plan set that he had requested that we make within his review letter. We finished those yesterday afternoon and we sent them out electronically to both Jay, the chairman, and John. And then today, we put together a formal response to all of those comments. So we've already gone through Mr. Krebs' comments and we know which changes were made as a part of those. And if you'd like, we can go through civil consultants' comments. Since the last planning board meeting, we have had an onsite site walk with members of the board to review the site distance at that location, as well as the building areas and the road alignment. At that time, it was discussed that some additional buffering be proposed along the southerly boundary, which is common to one of the abutters, so that it would reduce the impact of loss of vegetation on our proposed site. And we've added those within the plans here this evening. So in sheet five of nineteen, at the site walk, just as we came over the crest of the hill, we discussed adding some evergreen vegetation along this location, as well as just prior to the crest of the hill, so that the gaps in the remaining vegetation left on our property would be filled in with wet spruce trees. Here are John's comments on his initial review, where that we needed to provide a landscaping detail, which we've done within the plans, as well as a landscaping schedule, which we've done as part of the overall construction details of the plan set, as well as the overall layout. There were no other issues that came out of that site walk that we undertook with the board. At the last planning board meeting, the board asked us to consider, and John asked us to consider, a hammerhead. We are very willing to review and construct a hammerhead as opposed to a full cul-de-sac. In fact, we took the time and energy to put together a design for a hammerhead that we thought was viable. It's a design that we've utilized in other communities, other large communities with larger vehicles. They find it acceptable. And we thought the design would be found acceptable by your fire safety group. When we met with the representative from the fire department, as well as the representative from the Department of Public Works on site, we were basically told that a hammerhead would not be permitted on this project site and that we should maintain the cul-de-sac. We have, for purposes of tonight's meeting, maintained the cul-de-sac. We were also asked at that meeting to widen the road from eighteen feet to twenty feet to create a fire lane, which we've also done in the plan set. And look at the signage that we had proposed on the project site, as well as look at the entrance squares to the project site, to make sure that they would maintain the vehicle entrance for large safety vehicles, as well as Department of Public Works maintenance procedures. Really, the only other thing that came out of the planning board and discussions at the sight walks were stormwater analysis and how this project would impact the drainage as it leaves the rear of the site. And I think what you've seen in Jay's review of our project was that they have asked us to increase the amount of impervious surface that we are assuming within our model. But those increases in assumptions should not, in his opinion, change the overall impact of the project and that we should sort of rerun that analysis upon final review to ensure that the stormwater analysis results don't change. We did complete today, the results did not change, and we would send that back to civil consultants for their final review. So, as a recap, we are looking at a five lot subdivision. Two of the lots are proposed to be single family. The three others are currently proposed to be two-year for complex in the future. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from board right now.
First, to apologize for going through with the hammerhead design and the, you know, cul-de-sac design. Disappointed that the fire chief and the road agent didn't attend our site walk and that a member of the planning board wasn't invited to the discussion at the road agent and the fire chief. It seems as though it was a very one-sided discussion. Kind of very, very disappointed in that situation and really believe in communications amongst the boards and groups and really disappointed that didn't happen.
Disappointed with us, sir? Disappointed with us?
No, no, with you. What the town, I'm calling you. Okay, okay. The, so the road right now is, the road agent wanted twenty-four feet correct?
Yes, your subdivision regulations allow down to eighteen feet based on a low-volume road, which this is a low-volume road based on your regulations. The NFPA one requires that fire lanes be twenty feet wide and of course, this should qualify for a fire lane. And so we agreed that eighteen feet to twenty feet was a reasonable increase in request. And the road agent at that time asked for an additional four feet, so a total of twenty-four feet. We don't agree that that's necessary on this particular project and we don't agree that it's supported within your regulations to require that based on a low-volume road.
All right, now also the cul-de-sac. He wanted that entire thing paved.
Yep, that's, that is common or used to be common practice in the eighties and early nineties, that this entire surface area be paved. It makes for plowing of the, for DPW easier. It makes for snow storage and things easier for them. But in general, it looks like a large landing, you know, landing pad. It serves no other purpose other than to make that easier when you could make the circle with a wing plow. The center of the cul-de-sac in almost every community we work in is landscaped in some way and is utilized for stormwater capturing and discharge.
But let's talk about these two issues that pass forward. John, your comments?
Well, my comment is that your regulations allow an eighteen-foot road. And this isn't really just an eighteen-foot road. This is an eighteen-foot wide paved surface with two-foot gravel shoulders, which, there's many, many roads in this town that are eighteen feet wide with less than that, with less than two-foot shoulders to support a heck of a lot more traffic than five homes. So, you know, it's your, it's, we've had this, we've had this discussion before. You know, what makes sense, paving or, or, you know, it's not just the applicant that's going to pave, to pave the pavement. But if the town ends up with only this road, and they probably will, every time it's resurfaced, the town will resurface in, you know, two more feet of asphalt. So, you know, it's, I guess it's a good discussion to have. I don't know, I don't know, you know, maybe we could listen to the fire department and that and find out why, you know, the two feet is important. It's a straight road.
Yeah. Mike, I'm gonna be looking for your comments because as the board is elected, you're in charge of the roads. And what do you, across twenty-four feet?
The select board has listened to and appreciates the counsel from the fire department and the Department of Public Works and would side with the extra, the extra feet for. So you allow, to allow fire personnel to be able to actually access to discuss the situation on a shared drive that we approved.
So you said eighteen feet, twenty feet?
Twenty-four.
Twenty, was the.
It's proposed twenty now. Your regulations allow eighteen, right?
I think they originally came in at eighteen.
Eighteen now.
By twenty, twenty, right?
Twenty, right.
Right, so. Twenty is okay with you. Okay, so we don't have to go to twenty-four. The concern, the concern I have with twenty-four is that if we had done that, you know, there goes those trees. It's hard to be putting in the long, long south side of the park. So, you know, can't get more.
We are concerned about fire personnel being able to access the cul-de-sac. We have had issues with other hammerheads.
Blacking the cul-de-sac.
We would prefer a cul-de-sac.
Fully paved cul-de-sac.
I think that the plan with the, with the green space in the middle is probably preferable because of the MS four.
So now we're at, it's a, is it going to be a one-way cul-de-sac? How wide is it going to be? What are you looking?
We can, I can chime in.
If you can, go ahead.
Based on other communities' truck sizes, we've found on smaller radiuses that twenty-four to twenty-five feet is really required. This is a larger outside radius that we're proposing here than in those other communities. So if the board feels more comfortable with us running the template of the truck, the largest truck that you have, and if we can reduce this width from twenty-four to twenty-five down to twenty, we'd be happy to take a look at that. This was just based on our experience in the past. And that removal would really just remove, again, impervious surface from, from the project site.
Miles, comments?
I think my question was, what is the diameter of this cul-de-sac at the widest?
Well, it should be.
I didn't.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
The centerline radius is fifty-four.
No, outside pavement, outside pavement.
I'm working on it.
Oh.
I'm still learning the math sometimes.
Sorry about that.
So, half of the width would be an additional twelve feet. So, that would be sixty, sixty-six feet on the outside, when most outside radiuses are between fifty-five and sixty.
All right, so I think generally, the direction that we're giving the applicant is that we are looking at a twenty-foot road with one foot gravel shoulders on either side for twenty feet? No, twenty feet of paint.
It was two-foot gravel.
We're showing currently two feet of gravel shoulder.
I don't think, you don't want to go down to one-foot shoulders.
Right. So the paved area will be twenty with two-foot gravel shoulders on either side.
Yep.
All right, and the cul-de-sac will be a one-way traffic, green space in the middle. I would encourage you to contact the fire department when you have the final decision down and make sure that that meets the requirement and to have them get back to the planning board on that. I don't want to hear from you, I'd rather hear from them. Okay, hammerheads.
Well, Pat.
Yes, sir.
If the road is going to be as wide as the cul-de-sac is, there's no point in making, I don't think it matters if it's one-way or two-way, it's so small.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that it's pretty wide. But it's also short, loop around. It's not like it's real convenient to go both ways. I don't know from a design, from an engineer's standpoint, what you guys prefer, but.
We prefer one-way just because it's supered.
Sure, oh, super elevated.
It's supered to the left, which is a natural superposition.
Yep. All right, so then, then we're looking at green space in the middle. You will submit some sort of landscaping plan.
We've submitted that.
That's already done. All right, hammerheads, okay. I really don't want to fight the battle of the hammerheads tonight. I think the plan as presented right now with the cul-de-sac works. But I do think that going forward, the boards need to work together to deal with plans that are environmentally sensitive. In other words, and we don't have massive amounts of pavement and impervious areas. You know, I think to sit down and straight out say that a hammerhead, just no, no hammerhead, I think is short-sighted. I think it's, you're not really thinking the issue through completely. I was really upset when I read that email on, you know, the results of your conversation with them. Would the representative from the fire department care to say anything? We're not really going to go into the issues tonight.
As far as the hammerhead?
Yeah.
In my experience with hammerheads, they're not put in correctly and they've been a, excuse my French, a pain in the ass to turn the truck around.
What's your name?
Kevin Hurd.
Kevin Hurd, okay. We're not going to have that, that argument this evening. We will, it's. We just have, tonight, we have a cul-de-sac in front of us. I think that is, right now, the way to go. And that's the direction. Go ahead. John?
Is this time to express any other concerns about the site plan?
That's what we're going into right now.
Okay, so, all right, so we've gone into those, at least the issues that I was concerned with. The, as we did the site walk, we did have concerns about the southerly side of the site, the green space in there. I think, personally, I think what you presented is a little thin. Okay, I just, I wouldn't want to see a fairly solid line of trees there. Yeah, I know they're grown, but, you know. We don't want to plant them too tight, or we'll choke themselves.
All right, now something we'll have to address. The site distance was an issue. Now, is there still an intention to cut down the hill a little bit, or what's going on there?
Yes. As the board knows, we put together a sightline profile in both directions at the entrance. Just one second, Mr. Chairman. The largest concern is to the south, towards Rollins Road. And at this position where we, a vehicle would come out and stop and then inch forward, the sightline distance is supposed to be three hundred feet, which we can achieve with vegetation removal within the right-of-way and some removal of the bank that sits in this position here within the right-of-way. And when we met on-site with the road agent and the planning board on-site, it looked as though that would be adequate. Mr. Stevens also makes a comment about that in his review letter and also finds that it would be an adequate mitigation.
Good job.
My concern, my biggest concern about this, this plan is in fact the sight line. And we walked it, and you know, when you're standing up, you're at a height higher than when you're in your car. I actually backed my car up, I drive a fairly standard type of vehicle, a Toyota Camry. I backed in there this morning and put my nose to the edge of the road. And I watched for traffic coming up the hill. I got two seconds.
Yep.
From where I could see a vehicle, you know, from where I could see a vehicle when it crossed in front of me. Now that wasn't scientific, it was the old one Mississippi, two Mississippi. And my concern is, this is going to be a subdivision with fairly, it's going to be, I think, higher-end homes, going to have people with kids, people pulling out with minivans. And oddly enough, even though the sightline to my right, looking towards Rollins Road, was the one I was concerned about, I was distracted a lot by the traffic on the left, because the traffic on the left is going faster, because it's, so you look to the right and then you look to the left because you hear traffic coming. And I'm concerned that people are going to be pulling out and there are going to be accidents there. And given that this is going to be an area of some prosperity in the homes, you're going to have people pulling out with trailers, pulling snowmobiles, pulling boats. And I'm very concerned that the remediation you're talking about is not going to be enough to make this safe. And I don't want someone getting hurt on my account as a member of the planning board. So that's, that's my single biggest concern about this project is the sight line.
Can I address that, or can I get other comments first? So, did you back into where we had walked down?
I didn't.
Okay, the trouble with where you backed into was you're actually approximately two feet lower in elevation from where the proposed roadway is coming out. There is a, an iron pipe that was flagged along the edge of the road. And on the sight walk, we very clearly went up and witnessed that point. And then I showed the board where we would be coming out. And the elevation difference there is enough to make the difference between whether or not you're looking at three point seven five feet and seeing the proper sight distance to three hundred feet or not. And so where you were parked is lower than the elevation that we would be coming out on Rollins Road.
The back of my car was up on an incline, so I felt that was even higher up than normal, but I hear what you're saying.
I share John's concerns as well with the sight line. And I understand, and we want, that the road will be shifted over slightly towards the left if we're looking into the proposed subdivision. I think in practice, those of us who drive on that road on a regular basis, see if people drive on it. And I still have concerns with a road coming out of there.
The other mitigating, or the other form of mitigation is that the existing tree line, as you look north on Clement Road, is very close to the edge of pavement. And that area is also proposed to be cut back so that you have better sight distance in that direction also, so that you're witnessing those incoming cars sooner than you would under today's circumstances. The purpose of these sightline profiles is to show that it could be done with these mitigation factors and not that you could do them today. Because you can't do them today without these construction modifications.
I think that the problem with, and I understand that and I appreciate that, and part of the problem is though, with these mitigation efforts are going to dramatically alter this landscape that the abutting neighbors truly enjoy. So I think I have that problem as well. It's a very rural part of our town, more rural part of our town than certainly where we're sitting now. So, we still have any concern.
Miles?
I think I share the same concerns. Having had my car recently serviced, at the garage on Clement Road, you can't see, yeah, this garage on Clement Road. You can't see.
That's another meeting.
You can't see fully enough.
John, some comments, thoughts?
With regard to sight distances, I really don't have any. The only thing I would ask is, and I'm sure, can you flip back to sheet three, Chris? Was, did you give any thought to putting the driveway on the south side of the existing house?
Here?
Yeah. I mean, Clement Road is straight as an arrow there.
We didn't, just because in this particular location, we would have to cross through wetlands and wetland. Uh, we didn't, just because in this, uh, particular location, we would have to cross through wetlands and wetland water.
This wetland, this wetland is pretty, I mean, it's about two feet wide there. And by my calculation, the road would actually be, it wouldn't be any longer if you ran it through here. Yeah, if you ran it through here, this wetland is, I don't know, two, three feet wide there. If you ran it up through here and over there, it would, I think it'd actually be shorter than that road. It would pull the, 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 the road off the curve. Again, it's not my job to design a subdivision, but I think that would eliminate that issue. Um, and actually, I think that there's more viable uplands on that side of the site. But, just, just, you know, again, you're the designer, and I'm not, um...
Yeah, we, we viewed it as, that, that would generate an environmental impact that could otherwise be avoided. Uh, that's why we designed it the way we did it. Can you explain how it would work in more detail?
Sure.
So anytime we're looking at, uh, laying out a subdivision, we look at, um, safety, and we look at environmental impact.
Folks, can, can we keep the conversations between one another down right now, please?
Mr. Chair, just a, just a little question?
We are in conversations right now, I will be opening at the public hearing at a point.
Louder, louder, that's all I'm asking.
Yep.
So we look, uh, when we lay out a subdivision, we look at, uh, safety, and we look at environmental impact. And so if we were to consider a roadway that came through here in this fashion, as John is describing, uh, it may be coming up something like this into a cul-de-sac in that fashion, uh, we would generate, uh, environmental impact in the jurisdictional wetland area here. Um, and so we looked at, uh, putting the roadway here, where it would have, uh, not no environmental impact, but it would have less environmental impact on the jurisdictional wetlands directly. Um, and then we review, uh, whether or not we can achieve the required sightline profiles, um, which we put together for, uh, Department of Transport, uh, Transportation, and many other communities in the fashion that we've done here. And we determined that with the, uh, removal of that slope and the vegetation, that we could meet the safety requirement at that point also. So, from an engineering standpoint, uh, the position of the road and the subdivision that we've designed is ideal, because we have no jurisdictional wetland impacts, and we can achieve the sightline profile distances.
I would, I would encourage you to, thank you, Thomas Supreme's opinion, so. It would be a little less intrusive, you know? There would be a conditional use permit that would, uh, be good, but... So, John, anything else?
That's all I got. I mean, I'm just, I'm just digesting these plans for the first time, so I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. I got it down, I asked, but you still need to go through these things. Okay, any other questions from the board? Alright, hearing none, no, no, hold on.
So, so, so some of the, the sightline mitigation, the soil removal landscaping done, is entirely on, on the, on the, on the proposed parcel, or does it go on, there's nothing on anyone else? The abutting neighbors, uh?
It's within the Clement Road, right?
Then the, the town's, right?
Anything else? Okay, at this point, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing as I normally do. Keep in mind that if this was Somersworth, to tell you the truth, this is a one-night thing for them. It would, it would go through anyway. Uh, Rollinsford, thank God. Responsible for some of that, so... Rollinsford, we, kind of, since we're all volunteers here, you know, we're, we can slow things down a little bit, which is kind of nice to have, and back, think things through a little bit more, so, um, just kind of keep in mind of, of that fact, you know, I really wish we would have had a better turnout last month, but, you know, that's, it is what it is. Uh, so what I'm gonna do is open the public hearing. Please, uh, address your questions to the chair, and I will ask whomever to, to address those, uh, concerns. So with that, public, yes?
State your name and your...
Yes, state, uh, name and address for the back. Alright, so, who wishes to go first? I saw her hand go up first.
I'm Elizabeth Markot, I live at 280 Clement Road. Um, it says something written up, so I won't get nervous. When I bought my home in 2013, there was a field across the street, and the speed limit on Clement Road was 25 miles per hour. Now the speed limit's 30, and instead of a field, there are two huge houses across the street from me. One of those houses, 285 Clement Road, I understand was built by diversified builders. The house has a sprinkler system that over the years operating, I've seen running even in the rain. And I feel that water's being used to water a lawn, that it's a threat to the water in our neighborhood in the aquifer, and I worry about my well running dry. Um, this development that's coming in, I have to apologize, before I came here tonight, I had been told it was gonna be four duplexes in a house. I understand now it's gonna be three in a house, but... Um, that the water usage, I'm sorry, two houses, three duplexes. I believe the potential water usage of those wells will threaten the water in our neighborhood. The proposed residences will also bring a significant increase to the road traffic on Clement Road, with all those vehicles traveling the road, and their destination concentrated across the street from my home. The entry to the proposed new road, Oldenburg Lane, is located on a rise, and will have limited visibility at best, allowing for potential increase of accidents along the road, that as residents, we know cars and large trucks already travel at too great a speed. The road is posted as local traffic only, but that doesn't stop construction vehicles and non-local traffic from traveling the road as a cut-through to Route 9 in Somersworth. I feel aggrieved by this potential development, and I'm concerned that, um, builders will continue to come before the board, asking for these type of developments. I love that Rollinsford's a small rural town, and I'm worried that approving this type of large development is the start of things for our town and my neighborhood. And I'd hate to think over time that whenever a plot of land is sold, there's a potential for builders to come to our town and build large developments, leaving residents stuck with the outfall. I hope you'll take these concerns into serious consideration when deciding what goes forward with this plan. Thank you.
Kathy Lamb, Turgeon's, Two Turgeon's Way. Now we put this cul-de-sac in.
Can you see your name again, please?
Kathy Lamb, L-A-M-B. Two Turgeon's Way. When we put our cul-de-sac in, we thought it was the most beautiful thing in the world to have. Unfortunately, you can't have a car go into it or out of it, it's 18 feet. Uh, because there isn't enough room to maneuver, number one. Number two, every time they come out with a truck to plow, they take out half of the circle, because it's not big enough for the wing. So, these are problems we've had to live with. Every spring we go out, we reseed it and redo it. And it can't be fixed, it's something we're living with. You cannot have a person going in the road and coming out the road at the same time. Now you're putting all these families in there, on what size lots, I don't know. But how are they gonna commute school time, when everybody's trying to get to work and school at the same time? Mothers going back in, how are you gonna get them down that road? Never mind the small little Clements Road. That's all I have to say.
Do you live on the, uh, right off of Rollins Road?
430 Rollins Road, it used to be, now it's Turgeon's Way.
Falls out back into...
Yeah, that's $240,000 road.
That was a special situation, where we ran that road in there for you, wasn't it?
That road was set up for two 11-acre lots, just two.
Right.
And that's all I have in there, I have Ralph Fips on one side, Bob Meagan on the other. That's it, we have no houses in there.
And you paid for it, right?
We paid for it, yes, we paid for it.
Well, that's a, that, that's a private road, that's, private road.
Well, the town owns it.
Town owns it, yes.
You took it over, we don't own it anymore.
The town meeting, the town meeting several years ago, I don't remember.
But a while ago, it passed, it passed, it is a town road. The town plows it.
I was, I was on the planning board at that time, I was a volunteer. Okay, alright.
So, it hasn't worked out all that great.
Okay. Who cares to go next? Yes, sir?
Um, Al Zakbus, um, 281 Clement Road. We basically are right next to the proposed, um, road, and, um, we are very concerned. Um, our son's over here, we bought that land seven months ago, and it was our dream, basically. It was perfect, it was actually private backyard. Even with the proposed trees, I mean, you should come and see. Like, it's literally cars, it will be even more fun to have a cul-de-sac, because when they're turning around, their headlights are gonna be basically in my backyard. So that's one of our biggest concerns, the amount of private land we're gonna lose. What is that gonna do to our property value? That's another question that we have. We have no idea. We wanna have this conversation with Mr. Gagnon, and we wanna have this conversation with the board. We wanna have people who can back us up, who can tell us what to do. I have no idea. Half of the things that you were talking about is foreign to me. I just need to be informed, I need to learn, I need time. And the other piece that is really concerning is, I talked to our neighbors, uh, we talked to our neighbors, Kerry's my partner here, um, so many of them are concerned about, you know, I, I wasn't even wor, you know, worried about it, but, 'cause I always lived in a, um, city water. They were talking about what's gonna happen to their, um, um, wells. Our neighbor's well, um, right next to us, already ran dry this summer, once. So, without having nine more different units, um, well, actually now it's apparently, we thought it was gonna be four duplexes. So, we are really concerned, and the last comment that I have, the reason that we moved away from, um, more developed areas, is we wanted to be somewhere that we can actually just feel we are away from the craziness of life. Um, I don't know a single duplex, a single duplex within a one radius, mile radius. I don't know, I can walk, I, I drove around, there's gonna be now three. And now when I looked at the town's economic development plan, there is actually, it says, "When we're developing, we wanna protect the rural nature of Rollinsford." I don't know how are we gonna do that, if this goes through without any challenge.
Okay, thank you. Who cares to go next? A whole bunch of you out there. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Nelson Laurie, I live at 327 Rollins Road. I'm essentially across from where the project is going to be. And I agree with the previous speaker that water is the issue. Whether we're talking internationally, or nationally, or locally, and you can't talk about water quantity without talking about water quality. I have to ask, you know, on behalf of my neighbors, what is gonna happen, number, number one, what's gonna happen to our water table? I've had no knock on wood, no problem with my well. Uh, I get it tested periodically for coliform bacteria and that sort of thing. Uh, I'm wondering now what's gonna happen. So, first of all, there's gonna be a lot of need for water in this project. It's gonna impact on the people who live in the vicinity. I guess the corollary point is, there water in, and then there's water out. And I'm talking about septic systems and leaching beds and that sort of thing. It seems to me that this project, essentially cluster housing, you're asking these, these duplexes particularly, and their leaching beds, to bear a heavy burden. Um, there's gonna be some, there's gonna be some leaching off of this, that, and the other thing. So, I would have to ask that question as well. Water in, in terms of quality and quantity, watered out, uh, is the soil, uh, the substrate around these houses, is it, is it going to be able to absorb the, the, the products of the leaching beds?
What? Oh, it's what?
My, my wife asked me to add, to point, one more corollary. Um, what testing has been done in terms of percolation or alternative, um, soil testing? That would, uh, that would tell us one way or another, this is gonna work?
The traditional, one of the reasons why you've seen the road come in there is that, that there's been a perck test for septic back in that area, so...
I'm going with that, so I'm sorry.
But, you, as you've seen that road that went in there, okay? That was so they could get out back and do perck tests on the properties in the back. Okay, so that has occurred, and that has to go through the state of New Hampshire as to, you know, the adequacy of soils and their plants.
Has it been shown to be adequate yet, or is that still ongoing?
Yes, it's shown to be adequate, and, uh, we have to submit to the Department of Environmental Services, for their final review also.
So they have to go through the state, they have reviewed the plans, and waiting for your final approval from DES, from the Department of Environmental Services, which we all do, any of us that have a septic system.
But my, my statement still holds, the impact on the available water in the local wells, aquifer.
I'm gonna ask you a question. The property that you said the well went dry on?
It is, it's a, I think it was, um, our neighbor Eric, um, 42 dash 2. It's Eric and, yeah, um...
The one, right, the one right in the chest?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, not the one on the corner?
Yeah, no, yeah. Can I ask a question, please? Also, um, in terms of the traffic, two gentlemen brought up, um, that's actually a concern that we didn't know, uh, we didn't have when we were buying the house. Um, but, um, has there been a, um, a study done in terms of the traffic load? How Clement Road has changed over the course of years, and how this is gonna affect? Is there a study, instead of just, 'cause I appreciate, um, um, the plans around how to mitigate this, but also there's this volume issue around traffic and speed. And I have to be honest, um, it's almost like our driveway is a mini example of that. We don't have any line-of-side issues, I am nervous coming out of that driveway every day. 'Cause it's like, boom, there, is there gonna be a study about this?
Clement Road, it has been, there's been traffic studies out there in the past, Mike, if you can back me up on this. I know that there has been, I, I think the speed limit, the, the speed limit, when it was at 25, was illegal. Uh, that was something I, that somebody actually, I think, took us to court on. And that's the reason why I went up to third, yes.
But that's 25, Madeline, but...
But, you, you'd need to state your name if you're gonna ask a question. Um, so, that, that was put up by the state. Uh, actually, as I was looking at the plan, you're showing a 20 mile an hour sign. I would debate whether or not that's, that's a lot.
On our proposed road?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, at the, at the time we developed, decided within our project site, we weren't sure if this would be public or private, so it might have to be a 30 mile an hour.
So, the, the road has been studied in the past. Has it, as we look at traffic impact, I think we would look at it to, you know, this, this site, you know, the addition of these, these vehicles, you know, turning in and out. Clement Road has been a problem for, for years, you know, it's, I've, I've been a resident of Rollinsford for 20, but I was a resident of Somersworth for 40 before that. And, uh, I used to go and jump the hills on that road, a long time ago.
We're like finding them now.
Hey, just had a Toyota Corolla, we go, step and over. Um, I was 16 years old back then, too. But anyway, Clement Road has always been a problem road. And I, I, I don't think that there is an easy solution to, you know, the answer for it. Other than, you know, to tell you the truth, put a cul, uh, put a, put barriers at the end of the road, at the Somersworth line, and put a cul-de-sac there. Now, if you really wanted to do something about it, that's how you fix a problem, so...
I absolutely agree, however, my concern is, I guess, without, if that is your sincere opinion, and I guess shared by a lot of people as well, um, the idea of adding, let's say, 16, like, what is, is two houses and three duplexes, let's, you know, be very conservative, um, six cars, um, total of 10 cars, maybe 10-plus cars, coming out, in and out of that, um, and already a problem road, we're adding more, um, without a proper, an understanding of what is, what has been happening and what needs to happen. That, this is, you know, and I have five and a seven-year-old.
Trip counts coming out of duplexes, you know, of that road, I think, I think.
Yeah, we, we provided a trip-end analysis for the board, uh, at the, at the last board meeting. That was also reviewed by civil consultants, um, and they found no exception with the trip-end analysis that, uh, we provided to them. Uh, we did not study the corridor by any means, so we could do some trip counts on Clement Road, and we could do a speed study. Um, the results of that, um, on such a low-volume road, um, depression...
Low volume, low volume, low volume.
Let him speak, please.
Our project is a low-volume road.
What about his proposed road?
Um, and it would enter onto Clement Road, so, uh, we would study the distribution of the proposed low-volume traffic onto Clement Road, um, and how that impacts, uh, the volume over there.
How many trips do you plan, would you anticipate coming out of that road daily onto Clement Road?
How many trips do you plan, would you anticipate coming out of that road daily onto Clement Road?
Well, the average house is eight to 11 trips.
Yeah.
You have a duplex figure, you know.
It's, it's not that, it's not that linear, John. The, um.
Isn't it six and a half sometimes?
Yeah.
Which seems awkward though.
So the, uh, these, uh, these are taken right out of the, these are taken right out of the trip end handbook, which is published by ITE. Total volume of trips generated by a single family house is 9.57. And, uh, trips generated by the six duplexes, the six units, making up the three duplexes would be 35 total daily trips. Can I ask one last question?
I'm going to let this lady here.
Hi, Madeline Campbell, I'm at 195 Clement Road. I actually used to live at 280 Clement Road, I sold the house. Thank you. It's, it's a bad, where, the house that Oz lives comes out, the site's bad. My kids have, I have all my kids raised there. I've been, I lived on Clement Road in that house for 17 years. So many a car go off the road there. Many a car, because the speed's too high. They, they pick up speed. The site's bad. It's not a well site. But the thought that you're going to rip out all the trees to make it even sited better is real sad. It's a sad fact. We live on Clement Road, we've been there for 30 years. And we live there because we like the wellness. You know, I'm all okay with the people building houses. I'm a little concerned that duplexes are going back there. Are these going to be rentals? Are these going to be for sale? What do we have going?
We would, yeah, that's right. Currently, they're being proposed to be built for rental, but it would be available for sale or condensing in the future, which is what we discussed with the board at the last.
And you know, I think that's the hardest part, for people to really accept, that you're talking about making rentals on a road.
It's a chance.
And, and I, granted, people are entitled because they own, but that's not the nature of what we want to do.
The issue of the town force. It is loud.
No, I saw it, I saw it. Now, the zoning, just, I was trying to figure this out. You have to have at least 300 feet to be able, for a duplex, frontage. Now?
You have to have twice as much frontage as would be required as part of the subdivision.
Twice as much, so we have 200.
Well, that's 200 feet, that's it. So that'd be 300 feet.
Within this subdivision, because it's an open space subdivision, we have reduced frontage requirement.
You get into the standard plus bring, which is something we did a number of years ago in town. So, kind of, you, kind of pull off.
Yeah, it kind of like, yeah, yeah.
I know, I, I really don't like the, the type of development.
You can tell by the group here, they really dislike it. The other thing, the 25, the speed limit of 25 miles an hour, that was not changed by the state, it was changed by our police chief. He was insistent that we get up to 35. And there are 25 mile an hour roads in the state. They're in Mad Barry, they're in Lee. Only Rollins, only in Rollinsford have we had to come up to the 35, which is really terrible. Because 35 really means 55. And anyone who walks on the road knows that. So that little site thing where you're coming out, when they're doing 55, you are, you got trouble. My, my oldest son used to pull people out of ditches all the time, because we lived at 280. Just, that's what happens, they fly off the road. And there's a lot of water there. I don't know what's going on, but there's a lot of water across from Liz's house. Piles up there.
Can I, can I point out the process that we've gone through to this point? Mr. Gagnon is a single family home builder. He started construction on this home in hopes of developing this lot as a single family house lot. And we were denied the variance to do that. So we're essentially forced to come in with an application.
Back up a little bit. This planning board asked you what your, your, your overall intention was. You said you had no other plans at that time. Then you went to the zoning board of adjustment, and you said, "We had a master plan all along. And our master plan was to do more development in the back lots." So this planning board tried to help. Because we try to figure out, is there a better way to do this? And we were, we, I think we were misled, so.
I'm, I'm not going to go as far as that.
You created your own hardship.
I'm, I'm not going to go as far as you're going, Mike, because I, I will say that, as I recall, and John, I don't know if you can have any info on this, I did unasked what was the plan for the back land. And there was a mention that eventual subdivision.
There, there could be, yeah. And we said, "Well, is there?" And it was sort of fast and loose. That was the problem. And in fact, we actually talked about that at the end of the meeting.
The, the point is, Mr. Gagnon would like to do a single family development out here if the board would like to see that in a better arrangement. But we would need relief from your ordinance to do that. That's, that's where we're at with this. We're, we're looking at a density that is permitted, that is permitted by the state rules. We're looking at a subdivision that would otherwise be permitted. And Mr. Gagnon is willing to work with you on how this site is developed. If you want us to look at other ways to do that in a single family format, we're happy to do that, but.
What kind of density would you need for us to make, or to make it work?
Um, I think we would, we'd be looking for, instead of eight total units, we'd be looking for six single families out in this, in this upland area.
And you can't get that, you, I'm sure you looked at, you can't get that.
Um, it's the, mostly the lot width requirement. Because the lot width requirement doesn't go away as part of the open space subdivision. The lot frontage does. So if the lot width were relaxed as part of innovative land use design, we would, we, I haven't, I haven't found a solution, John, to answer your question. And I'm not misleading the org. But, um, but with that lot width requirement removed, I think we could probably get the single family density as opposed to the duplex density.
There was a gentleman in the back first?
Uh, yeah, Larry Martin.
280 Clement Road.
I'm curious, are they planning to irrigate these properties?
If so, it's more of a, more of a load on the water, obviously. It's corollary, it was being talked about earlier. That is a concern to me. Also, I've had heard, and again, this is just, that there was a problem with Janko's well. And something had to be done to bring water in.
Something's right.
Yeah. So are we going to be impacted by that as well, with all this drawdown? Kind of two questions, really.
Mike, do you know anything about Janko?
I think there's a gentleman here that was affected by it. He could probably speak to it a lot better than I could. As well, Mr. Baker's here.
Mr. Baker. Hi. So what's going on out there?
What's that? Oh. Um, they unintentionally polluted a couple of the wells in our town and had to put us on city water. So, my house.
So you're picking up, are you picking up from Somersworth?
Yes. Because, because the, because Janko had to put in a water line to their factory for the sprinkler system.
Okay, so this was a?
It was already existing, it was already there. They just tied us into it.
This was a pollution case?
Correct.
But your property, your buts is development, right?
Yeah, but it's, there's, they did a lot of testing when it first came to light, all over in your guys' area. And none of that was affected. But then again, with the new drawdown on the waters, you can never.
And the comment I'm going to make is, yeah, because I was affected by a 4,000 gallon gas tank that let go in Somersworth. And I've had dealings with this type of situation. Rest assured, I don't trust them.
Plus, I'm still interested about the irrigation question as well. Was there plans for that?
Sprinkler systems.
The.
For the lawns.
Is there any talk about irrigations, or? I don't think, we could put that in as a restriction.
Only because it's a concern with the water lately, you know, and.
Yeah.
Scary.
But while we're on the subject of water, my, still, my main concern is where all the stormwater is going to go. They're turning a lot of open land into a unpervious service. All the roofs, all the driveways, everything. And I'm the low point.
Where do you live, Jim?
On Goodwin Road, up on the back side.
John, do you want to say something?
I just want to say that, and a lot of the things I have to say is never very popular, but with regard to irrigation, there's no permitting requirements for, if someone wants to put an irrigation system in and they want to water the lawn, that's their right. If someone drills a well next door to you and they de-water your well, it's not their, it's your issue, not their issue. And I know it doesn't sound fair, but that's the way it works. And, um, so, i- if there's, you know, three duplexes and a single family home here, could they have an impact on the, on your water, or on the water of the neighborhood? Potentially, yes.
And we'd have no recourse?
You'd have no recourse.
Sue them.
It's, it's, and I, and I don't mean to sound coarse or crass, that's just, it's the way it is.
No, I understand that.
Everybody has the right to, to drill a well on their own property and provide themselves water. Whether, and whether or not they irrigate the lawn with an underground irrigation system, or they run hoses and water the lawn. There's really little control that the town can, the, the town really can't regulate that. The only thing the town can regulate is municipal water. So, um, and I, you know, I don't, you know, Pat just asked, could we put a restriction on no irrigation? I sup, you know, I suppose if the applicant was willing to, to agree to that, maybe we could. But again, it doesn't prevent someone from running hoses and watering the lawn. So, I, I don't know what good it would do. And, and I don't, and I understand the concern, so it's not.
Well, yeah. My concern is drawdown from other polluted wells, or the fact that all of a sudden you get six, what, four wells going here?
Four, yeah.
Yeah. And the backing may have on.
In the back.
Oh. I have a question for you. When you talked about removing vegetation and landscaping with the pin that you talked about in the corner, which is basically our pin, what vegetation are you talking about to remove? Go ahead. The vegetation from the pin, basically, to the sideline of Clement Road. There's very little vegetation that would have to be removed along this area here. Okay, so it may have to be still our vegetation? No. The vegetation that would be removed would be between the pin and the edge of Clement Road. And there's very little low by, low lying vegetation between those two points. Can I just add a comment? Look, at this point, like I said, I have no idea about how these things look. It's my first time. But I work with people. I'm a therapist. There are two important things that is really coming up for me. I'm going to share it with you all. There's what to do and how to do it. What is being done is very clear. You are following the quote unquote, "The letter of the law." How it's being done does not feel good bit. Basically, what I heard, this is, probably this happens all the time. It's through, you want, you know, someone wanted something. It's America, people can want what they want. They didn't get it. Now, basically, the town is being strong, strong armed into making a decision. I feel, and I know feeling is not enough. But one thing that I know, I have quite a lot of people here. Thank you so much for your support. I don't know what I'm going to do, but I'm not going to roll over and just say yes. I'm hoping Mr. Gagnon will be open to communicating with us. I would like to be able to continue to communicate with the board. What, some of the things that I heard was encouraging, that there, there will be a potential alternate to road, all that stuff. But, this is too much to take for me. I'm not sure how you all feel, to digest in one meeting. I'm going to ask, I'm not even sure if this is my right, to board formally, not to make a decision tonight, and have the public conversation going. That's the least I can hope from my neighbors. Thank you.
Any further comments? Lee, I saw.
Yeah, I just, I'm leading on on 230 Clement Road. I have three wells. We've lived on Clement Road, my family, for over 100 years now. The first well that the original family grew up on, never ran out of water. And there were seven, eight people in that house at that time. At this time, that well is completely dry. And we had to put it in a separate well. And I'm concerned about the water level, because I've never seen that water level go down like that in my whole lifetime. I'm 63. I also have land across the street from him that I tried to put a duplex on and was refused. And I've paid for a house lot on that for my family for whatever, 30, 40, 50 years. And I was refused to put a duplex on that one lot. Just so I could have a retirement home for myself.
Chairman in the back, you had your hand up.
Can you make a comment?
Let the gentleman here just, just make a comment.
Yeah, I'm Gary Van, 375 Rollins Road. Appreciate the opportunity. And sorry we didn't get in on this conversation like a month or two ago, because obviously a lot of work's been done to kind of go around the barn a couple times on a few of the issues that might have brought up in the first meeting. So, also, sure, you know, we've got to get it when we can, but here's an opportunity. One thing I did, just backing up a few steps, you did mention the option for a single family versus duplex. And somehow that got sidetracked for whatever reason. Is there a way of going back and going with that plan again? Or is it some other board that has to?
I'm going to discuss that once the hearing is done.
Okay. The point being.
I'm not going, I'm not going to let it down.
Yeah, and it was one of those, if the developer's willing to cut the basic family count down by, what, three? You know, it's two to five families, or five lots, or six lots, you said, six lots. So you'd have to cut at least two family units down. So, the drawdown, the issues, the lot, the traffic, all those things would be drawn down. It also changes, I think, neighborhood wise. We're, we're looking at, as far as neighbors, trying to connect with our neighbors, not just push people out, but have an environment that encourages a neighborly connection. And if you kind of overpack it, you know, the density increases, it changes the culture, it changes the climate, the vegetation's going, a lot of things disappear. And it becomes, like you said, downtown, which is ever downtown, but it's not our neighborhood anymore. It's a, it's a plaque. And I grew up in a community back in Rhode Island, that everything was bulldozed and houses were put up. Before you knew it, that's all you got, is asphalt and buildings. And I think we've got a different culture in Rollins, and I'd like to see that encouraged.
All right, I'll let you get some go. Yep, go ahead.
Django.
Yep.
Liz Mark at Clement Road. I just want to back up a little, that I wasn't able to be at what I think was the first meeting in September, but I did view the tape of it. And during that meeting, if it was that meeting, that I'm, there was a comment about dividing off the property for the little red house, and what would happen with the rest of the land. And there was something about, well, we might build some houses, we might build a farmhouse. And then I think Joe Coet was the.
That probably was the CPA meeting.
The CPA, okay, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Well, at least in that other public meeting, there was, maybe it'll be a farmhouse. And from a farmhouse, here we are to three duplexes and two houses. So, plans change, I appreciate that, but some sort of strong arming.
Okay.
Off of the worst.
Any further, yes, ma'am?
Ginny Bannon, 375 Rollins Road. I totally agree that there should not be any duplexes rental units. This is a rural community, and we are a community. We are, we know our neighbors, we enjoy our neighbors. And the one thing that I, I picked up on was that if single family houses were put down there, then, then the, the, it's going to have to be adjusted. The zoning, the setbacks, whatever, has to be adjusted to fit the number that you want us to put in there. Why can't you just go with the number that will fit in there the way our, the way our laws read now? You know, why do we have to maximize every plot up there? If, if the way it reads now, we can only build four or three, so be it. Stick with it, stick with what we have.
All right. Further comments? We'll, we'll come back to you in a sec.
I'm Summer Perry, 3 Indy Rollins Road. I'm on the corner. I just want to share that I, I share my concerns about the traffic. It is just awful as it is now. And to have increased traffic would be terrible.
Any further comments?
Just one, sir.
Yes.
You cannot walk down Clement Road. You cannot walk down Clement Road. I, I walk my dog on Rollins Road, which is taking my life in my hands. But I cannot walk down Clement Road because there is nowhere to get off the road. And those.
And those, ever since Walmart went in, that is a cut through for all of Berwick, South Berwick. So, any more traffic, oh, please.
I do have.
Okay, I'm going to.
I have a.
One, this lady hasn't spoken yet.
I'm Carrie Ferneld. I live at 281 Clement with us and our boys. And I guess I just wanted to also say, as a New Hampshire resident, I value privacy. And we have gone from a home that is idyllic and wooded with a private little backyard to literally a road being built in our backyard. There may be a couple trees, but it's so drastically different already, because the road's already there, than when we bought it seven months ago, and it's, it's really heartbreaking.
I just, my question is, do people's comments make a difference on this plan? Or they've got it, they've got it.
In general, yes. And you'll be hearing that in a while. Mr. Rollins.
Yes, one added comment. I appreciate what the gentleman here, what's your name, please?
Oh, John Krebs.
Hey, John. I appreciate what John said about the legalities of the water issue. But I would like to underscore his secondary thought that it's, that it seems unfair. It seems particularly unfair for those of us who have been here a long time and are established and who have old wells for somebody else to come in and perhaps dispoil them in some way, shape, or form. That's it.
Yep.
Further comments? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay. At this point, what I am going to encourage the applicant to do is to work with Mr. Krebs and potentially myself. See if we can rework this plan for the amount, for the access to the site and whether or not we can get to replacing the duplexes to single-family homes. Like to see if we can make that happen. Is that something the board wishes to look at? We have, we have an application in front of us. That is legal. Sad, we do. And, you know, we deny this. I can rest assured, their next stop is going to be Superior Court. It's just, that's just a statement of fact. But I appreciate the residents, they're having the same issue. It's difficult to sit down and say that you're going to deny somebody. You're going to have a damn good reason to do it, though. So, that's the reason why I'm proposing what I just said. To see if we can try to come up with a more workable plan for the parcel.
I don't know. I'm not, litigation doesn't threaten me. So, but I am concerned by the cost to the town. I'm not opposed to that idea of, you know, I guess continuing the, the application for a later date. If that was done, Mr. Chairman, would there be also, if revised plans in terms of the single-family homes or access were achieved, would there be an opportunity for further public comment?
Yes. That's something I guarantee will occur each time. Especially as long as I'm chairman, which I'm done in March, by the way. Thank you, please. I would be, I would be fine with your proposal. Mike?
Always happy to see any legal plan that's put before me. But I think as my colleague, you're not afraid of litigating. We all know enough, but any use attorney is that I'm happy to have. That does correct me, but I would be happy with any other books.
John, any thoughts?
Let me ask one. I think it would be reasonable at this point to revisit this plan. Show us something that is more fitting with the neighborhood, that's more agreeable to the neighborhood. Because otherwise, I'm ready to vote no overall. If we can't find something a little more agreeable to the character of the neighborhood. I think a piece of land someone owns, someone should give. Obviously, which is stated, it's legal. Does it fit with the character of the community?
So.
What is your?
So, Claude has been a member of this community or one of the abutting communities for a long period of time. He's built a number of homes in this community. He's built a number of homes in the abutting communities, I'll say. And he is willing to work with the board and the community on coming to a resolution that hopefully we can all live with by way of a single-family home development. The ordinance is designed around innovative land use controls. And if we, the three of us or four of us or whatever it takes can sit down in the next couple of weeks and dive into those innovative land use controls and try and address many of the issues that have come up from the public, have come up from the board, and can achieve close to what we need to achieve, then we're willing to do that. But we do, and this gentleman here may perceive this as a threatening tone, but we do have an application before you. We are willing to modify our application moving forward to work with the board. But there is a statutory process. We would like to remain within that process to the best of our ability. If we're close to a project that we can all live with and we need some more time, we would understand that also. But we're not looking to, you know, delay the project needlessly. It would be for the gain of the total.
John, how does your time work? It's fine. No, I'm, you know, I just, you know, I'm always the guy, the bad guy or the guy giving out the bad news. But, you know, the reality is that we have zoning. You know, a lot of you are new to town or, you know, aren't affected by stuff, and you're never affected until there's something in your backyard, and that's when we see the crowds. But this board can't judge a project based on the character. It has to say, there's a flaw with it. The flaw is that, you know, there's an environmental issue that's readily apparent. The lot sizes aren't big, aren't sufficient. The traffic or the site distance isn't adequate, something like that. We can't simply deny a project because it doesn't feel right or it doesn't meet, it's not, it doesn't fit in with the character. Similarly, if their units are rental versus owned, we have no say over that. So, my hope is that, you know, if, you know, a small majority of the board and myself can work with the applicant, hopefully we can come back with something that everybody can live with, understanding that the person that owns this land has rights. And hopefully it'll address the concerns that you've all expressed tonight. So, yeah, let's do the best we can.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I'm not even looking like, I don't want to speak for my neighbors, but I wasn't looking for denial. I just want, I want continued communication.
Understood. Understood. So, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue this application to our December 6?
That's the date, so we'll leave it at that moment.
Our December 6 meeting. This is your official notification that we are meeting on this, that date, and we'll be bringing, bringing this issue up. It's not, you're not going to get a letter. You know, this is your notification. We're meeting that night at 7:00, and we're going to talk about this application again. So, that's, that's what I saw. I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the application to December 6. John?
Can I ask one last question before we?
Yes.
Can you explain, you've asked for a HISS, High Intensity Soil Mapping Waiver. There's been discussions here about, concerns about water flowing off the land. Would that address or give us more information on that issue?
It would give us more information that we would plug into our drainage analysis. It was our assessment, and I think it was Jay's assessment also, that it likely wouldn't change that analysis. If the board is not inclined to grant that waiver, we do have enough soils work on site to try and develop that with us soil scientists. But that, that's the, that's really the sole purpose of that type of soils analysis. It would also give us some classifications for soils for a reinfiltration of stormwater and effluent disposal, which was brought up here this evening.
All right, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the hearing tonight to December 6. Chair, have this project and leaving public comment open.
Second. Second by Mike. All those who pay are signified by saying aye. Those who oppose, we have ice habits. Except for tonight, folks, I will ask that people leave the room and maybe shut the door. There are going to be five in there, because we have a little activation. He's working a little, he's working a little.
Can you see, there's a red light on there?
There is a red light.
Okay. Thanks.
Sorry, Professor.
Every three times a week.
Yeah, you're on video. Smile. I know. I know.
Folks, can you buy it?
Is there any question? The new tour stopped at next meeting. Are you going to stay or? Can I help you?
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, so, we'll be on to our next issue, the challenge of the site plan review. Mr. Conley, what do you got?
Mr. Chairman, I will endeavor to keep this a little bit shorter, maybe a lot shorter than the previous applicant.
Oh, I knew that one was going to take a while. I thought we were going to be on this till nine o'clock. Oh, that's what I stopped earlier.
Thank you. Anyway, on behalf of C and J and Rollins Road Realty Trust, Mr. Albert sitting up at knee.
Can I open these up to give them to the board?
My name is Paul Conley, from Civil Works in Dover, here on behalf of those three entities. And I presume at this point, between paper copies that we have submitted and, sorry, PDFs that have been sent around, everyone's had a chance to look at the plan.
I'm not going to lie to you, Mr. Conley. It was so small on my computer screen that I was, I don't think I could actually, I would be lying if I said I looked. I saw the squiggly line going.
Thank you for your honesty. It's actually fairly, it's fairly small, a 20 scale, too. A pretty, it's a pretty minor thing we're looking to do here. But we wanted to show at least a portion of the site that everything is happening on so that you would have a comprehensive view of what we're asking to do. And in addition to showing it on sheet preview for, we've actually set forth a narrative on sheet, on the cover sheet, 104, on the upper right-hand corner, which says under Plan Intent, and there's basically eight items here.
Yeah, that was the, that was the care I noticed.
Yes. So, without further ado, I'll just go through them one by one. The first item that we're seeking to do is just slightly expand the pavement along the southerly side of the building. It's about four feet of pavement, and relocate the K-Cod berm on top of the edge of that pavement. And also, just fill in a little bit of pavement here, which will ease the turning motion, the turning template as we come from the southerly side of the building onto the east, easterly side of the building.
Just to clarify, should the board which stands, this addition is not an addition. That was, that was built a couple years ago.
A couple years ago.
It's not, that's not part of it.
It's still technically a building addition, but it's not proposed.
It's not, it's not part of this. It's not part of the application.
Well, I'm speaking about this little piece of pavement here. It's under item number one. And I'm also just going to jump over to item number five right here. And the reason I'm jumping between those two is because both of those lie just barely within the 50-foot buffer from the jurisdictional wetlands. And I think as Mr. Rollow can attest, we visited the Conservation Commission on 13th of October.
You were there, you weren't.
I don't like that.
Oh, you weren't there?
I was there at the end, maybe.
Okay.
Right after me, we're done.
Yeah.
Okay. You got unanimous approval for that. I haven't seen anything in writing from the commission yet. Has, has the chair, no? The board hasn't? Okay. But I think Mr. Rollow can attest to the fact that we did receive unanimous approval for, or endorsement, if you will, of the conditional use permit, which ultimately this board acts on. So those are the only two items here.
But just to explain, I'm sorry, Paul, just so the board knows, I think Mike has seen this, this conditional use permit here is required, but it's on the other side of a road. There's already a driveway here. So even though it's within the buffer, it's sort of one of those things where it's too bad the ordinance doesn't say if it's, if it's being expanded beyond an existing road, it would be exempted. This one is, this one's a little bit different, but it's still a pretty negative.
The nice thing about this one is that it, too, is curbed. So, any runoff in that vicinity will not run directly into the adjoining wetlands, but runs down into this drainage system here, which then runs into a four-bay, a retention system, a treatment square, where it's released even further downstream to a further down jurisdictional wetland. So, I think with those two mitigating factors under one and five, the commission was, was disposed to, given if they're approval and they're not of advisory opinion in the affirmative. Item number two is simply to take this existing 1,000-gallon above-ground propane tank right here and move it from here over to behind this building right here. It's out of the way. It.
Which way, which way are you going with it?
Say again.
You're going from here to here, right?
Nope, from here to here.
Oh, so your arrows are, oh, someone on the counter said wrong.
All right. Okay. Yep. And just to jump to your comments, I think you suggested Bollards, but back there.
Your arrows are confusing. Your arrows are wrong, Paul.
All right, I'm sorry for my incorrect arrows.
They're wrong.
Yeah.
It's going the other way.
I think he might be, yeah, yeah. He's got an arrow going that way.
I don't really care.
It is slightly confusing. It's going to the side now.
That's fine, that's fine. But I, so you, you know, this would grab my Bollard comment.
Item number three is to remove this existing generator right here and bring it down the street, down here, and put it next to the existing pump station there. Because that pump station, as of now, doesn't have any backup power other than a portable generator that's brought over to pump it out, so. Item four is to add these two parking spaces right here. John, I think your comment was they were not quite adequately sized. And I think we can remedy that easily just by making them a little bit, they are white up.
Sure, sure.
Item five I talked about, again, that is on the side of the existing paved roadway that's away from the wetland. Item five I talked about, again, that is on the side of the existing paved roadway that's away from the wetland, shouldn't be an issue. Item six, and this one we can, we can visit, revisit if we need to, but the proposal is to remove this existing 12-by-16 wooden shed, which is four feet off the boundary line, and replace it with a 14-by-24 garage, a little bit of additional pavement, eight feet off the boundary line. But as John's technical memo correctly stated, it does require a variance to do that, because the setback required is 25 feet in this zone. And we have applied for that variance to the zoning board about two and a half weeks ago. And I actually sent Carolina an email today saying, are we scheduled or anything, and I haven't heard back.
I've heard nothing from the chairman.
Actually, nothing yet. I've seen the application, but I haven't heard about anything more.
Are you the zoning boards?
Yep.
You are, okay. So Joe hasn't given the, the go.
Has he been given the copy though?
I assume so, I mean, I was given a copy of the application, but
Oh, you was.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's just a matter of getting it on the books and?
Yeah, I think you just need to get a date, so.
Okay.
I can try to push it along for you tomorrow.
Yeah, do you have, do you have my email address?
I do.
Okay, would you mind just shoot me a?
Not at all.
How do you do and?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Alright, that was number six. Number seven, thank you, John, is the proposed bay and a half addition to the end of the log building. Currently, this houses 10 buses overnight in a heated storage area. The intention is to add one bay to that, and, and the, it's an oversized base, and the oversized area would be used for tire storage and other car storage. That's easily done, it'll look the same as existing. And then finally, number eight, right here, is, you won't see it when it's done, but there is an existing large generator right here, adjacent to building number one.
I'm so sorry, it's not the crayons.
And it is, it has plenty of reserve power that it can also power building number three here, besides building one and two, as it does now. So we just want to bring underground the electrical conduit to affect that temporary power. And that is the totality of our proposal. We were hoping to walk out of here with at least conditional approval. We understand about the, we don't want to put the board in any kind of position of endorsing the variance request.
Well, what we do is we put a conditional approval based off of the zoning
Results?
being approved.
Okay, yeah.
And if they had a problem with that, if they had a problem with that at the end, it's not a deal breaker, we just don't do it. That's, you know, that's simple.
Seems like kind of, I mean, it kind of makes sense, we're lessening the non-conformance by 100%, or, or eight feet.
John, comments?
My, my comments are all straightforward, I mean, obviously, you know that they need a variance for a shed, that's number one. Two is Paul's stamp on the plan. Three, I think Paul's already corrected, it's just noting that that's not proposed, it's already done. My comment four is that they need a conditional use permit, which I think is reasonable. Five is simply that this addition doesn't require any additional parking. I, it's because, I think you already park stuff there now, so just a note saying that, you know.
What we're gonna do, John, is there's a 40-foot trailer that sits out there on the rooftop, and
That's gonna go away.
That's gonna go away, we're gonna use it to put us inside, and then, as Paul suggested, we're actually gonna build a large tire rack to put all the tire for.
No problem. Number seven, six and seven, Paul said he can fix those spaces, that's fine. Again, this, this requires a conditional use permit, which I, a conditional use permit, which I support. My comment number nine is either wrong or Paul's arrows are wrong, so that can go away. My comment number 10, the generator, but we know where that's going now, so that's no longer an issue. And then 11 is that we, you know, I brought this up before, is there's no ADA spaces, and I, just for your protection, I would at least have a van space, Paul, because, you know, if someone ever I don't care where it is, but I just, I would hate to, I'd hate for you to say that there's no provision for ADA spaces.
Just put it on building one.
Okay. We can designate it and
Sure, I think it'd be good.
We actually have an entrance for it, and there's an ADA bathroom right inside, and we just need to sign, sign.
I would just do it to say you say you have it, you know.
Yeah, okay.
And then I guess if you're gonna, if, I might, I, I didn't hear of anything you were saying, Pat, but if you want to approve this site plan without this variance granted, the only thing I would say is that we should word the approval in such a way that if he doesn't get the variance, he doesn't have to come back. That he changes his plan or something.
Yeah, that's right. If I don't get the variance, we won't do it.
Okay, then that's fine, yeah, I just know he'd have to come back, you know, to
I don't, this is, this is really just
Well, personally, I really want Paul to have to come back from Florida and come up and see.
And I agree. Except for how we charge for the plan.
Yeah, this is gonna say, you'll be charged for that, that plan.
Look, the whole idea of this was total transparency, every tiny little thing we're moving, everything we're doing, so you guys see it, you know what's going on with the site, we insist that we do a total site plan.
And actually, I, I, Paul came and saw me a piece a month ago about this, and I thought it was pretty, rather than doing these things piecemeal or just doing them, I, it was pretty, I, I think, I'm, I'm happy with how this thing went, so.
Alright. The conservation commission was September or October meeting, do you remember?
It was October 13th.
It was October, I was trying to find the emails, you could all see it, but Mr. Dion did indicate to the select board that that happened, but I can't find the emails.
Alright, comments from the board, John?
Looks good to me.
Miles?
I agree.
I don't have anything. You gonna open the public hearing on this man, or any questions or comments, please address them to the board?
A little sparse now.
Going once, going twice, close, okay, alright, pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve with the conditional approval of the variance, I'm trying to word it right.
Okay, well, we have the variance, we have to, do we have to do the conditional use permit separately?
I would let
The application is for both.
I, I would, I would, I think you can make a motion to approve the site plan and the conditional use permit for, to allow this
Yeah.
and this intrusion into the buffer, all as one motion, I think that's fine.
Okay, okay.
But the conditions would be, if you, if you have my paper copy.
I know.
So someone, someone's got a craft about a condition for number one, that if the applicant does not get the variance, that the shit, that the proposed shed won't
Goes away.
Goes away.
That's fine.
So that's number one.
Okay, hold on a second.
Or the, this doesn't state that.
Well, that's gonna hold away the variance.
Okay, so, so condition number one would be that if the, if the variance is not approved, that the shed goes away. Shed be removed from the site plan. Number two, Paul's gonna stamp the plan, that's a condition. Number three is done, you know, that's not, that doesn't need to happen there. Number four is already handled with your motion to approve the conditional use permit. Number five, you wanna just put a note in there about no additional parking, or do you think it's?
You know what I'll do is, is we'll delineate the ADA space and I'll add a parking note, saying how many spaces are on site.
Perfect, so that takes care of, so, so condition number five will be a condition.
Okay.
Condition, or my number five will be a condition.
Well, do we have to put in a reference to the ADA spaces?
Well, we're gonna get there.
Okay.
That's, that's
Oh, okay, I just did.
So number three, or my, sorry, my condition number, or my number six, Paul. Paul, my number six, you're gonna, I guess that's fine to leave it that way, so six goes away. Paul's gonna correct number seven, so that, my number seven is a condition. Number eight, that's gonna be handled, you're gonna, you're gonna approve the conditional use permit for those two areas, so, so eight is not a condition, that goes away.
Just one small housekeeping item, it's actually the north side of building three.
What did I say?
South.
South.
You said the south.
I think it is the south.
But that goes away, right?
What did I say?
It's actually the east side.
It's the east side.
Yeah, okay, whatever.
Okay, east side, so east side, southeast side, that's fine. Ten, nine is no longer an issue, 10 is no longer an issue, and 11 is a condition. So the conditions that we have are, if someone can make, so the first one is that if the variance is not approved by the zoning board adjustment, that the shed goes away, right there. No, I'll just read them.
Yeah.
Number two, plans two and three will be stamped by this, like, the plan surveyor and the PE. Condition number four is that a plan note is gonna be added, a note's gonna be added to plans regarding parking and the adequacy of park, the adequacy of parking. Number, what am I at, two?
Five.
Five. Proposed parking spaces six and seven are gonna be enlarged to meet the parking standards. Number 11, I'm sorry, number six, that an ADA space or spaces are gonna be provided, I think, adjacent to building one. And then finally, that the board approves the conditional use permits, use permit necessary to approach on the wetland setback on the southeast corner of building three and at the southwest corner of building three, as shown on the plan.
Can you repeat that one?
That the board is also approving a conditional use permit for encroachment into the wetland buffer at the southeast and southwest corner of building three, as shown on the plan. Is that fair?
You got that all in some way? Alright, so I'll take that as, who cares, place that in the form of a motion?
I can.
The applicant's never accepted the petition.
Oh, yeah, make a motion to remove the plan as complete, say accept it, okay. Second, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed, you guys have it. Just basically say what John said.
All the conditions that John said on this, I, I make a motion to accept.
We have the shape, that's Okay, alright, okay. Second by Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed, you guys have it.
Can you stick around just for a second?
Yep, just, just as a footnote to burn my friend's ass here.
You're on tape.
Your next meeting, oh. I'll be on the choo-choo heading to Florida.
You're gonna be on the choo, you're gonna be on the choo-choo?
Yeah.
Take my money, ride the train.
I ride the train. Drive the train?
I thought it'd be, with all the money you pay.
It's only gonna be for
It's only gonna be for
Because he's taking his car down there, because we get free bus tickets, probably.
We do that, we take the old friends also.
I just, just, we, Paul and I chatted about meeting John on the front side, so we're gonna have some other stuff in the future, hopefully. In town, and the plan is to always go right out of the gate and see John first, and sort of get a push as to what his thoughts are. So when we get here, you know, it's, it's, obviously, it's up to you guys, but he sort of steers us in the right direction in terms of what he means as being acceptable on your behalf, to a point.
Alright, okay, alright. You can stick around if you want, this is gonna be fairly clear. The next item on the agenda is the LeBois situation. They are asking for a extension on their application.
On the same plan?
On something.
They were going to resubmit a new plan?
Well, they're gonna submit a new plan, I think, well, what are you guys looking to do here?
The new plan is actually ready to submit. And, and we're just holding off because we think, I mean, I think it's fair to say that it's gonna take a couple more meetings. As such, and knowing that I won't be here in a month's time, we just wanted to set it aside until your first meeting in May, and then restart the process. We'll, we'll submit the new revised plans at that point, and then
Did you withdraw it? Is the other one in La La Land, or did you, did you withdraw it?
We never rejected it, we
Well, you, I don't know.
Is this, is this kind of like off there? I think what would happen is that he'll submit new plans, who will re-notice again.
Yes.
And
It would be good, Paul, could you just have your, someone write a letter just saying that you're, you're withdrawing that application?
Well, we want to hold the application, and I did write an email to the chair that just asked to postpone until May.
Until May. Until May, I thought, oh.
So we're, we're basically giving implicit, and say you're gonna re-notice?
Yes, yes.
To
So what's the difference between withdrawing that and reno, and starting?
He doesn't put in his application piece.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you need a motion to
Extend
extend the
Application to the May meeting.
Till the, the May 2017.
Yes.
I see. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, those opposed, you guys have it.
Cool.
We'll submit plan copies and PDFs.
Well, you'll be talking to somebody else at that point. Really? Just, just being upfront with you.
Sorry to
Well, maybe you can say, like, an alternative or something better. We'll see. Alright, I'll have a call again. We'll see after the front of this stuff.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Alright.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Very well.
Enjoy it all.
Have a wonderful
What time did I tell him?
Eight thirty, it's okay.
Not bad, not bad. I'm only twenty, I'm only twenty minutes behind. Alright, so as you recall, I think back in March, we had an application from this young lady for a focus studio.
Thank you.
Your, your plans back a little bit, as far as the size of the building, I afforded those drawings out last night.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, our house exploded with water, so, our house has a lot more issues than we thought, but
Why, what happened?
All the pipes were closed.
You're the, you're
So I have no steam, it's, it's
Very nice.
Old house.
Yeah.
That just wasn't the thing I thought was gonna happen, but, it's okay. So, yes, we're scaling down.
So, did you folks see the plans that she had submitted? What, how many square feet did you go from two?
It went from 1,000 to, I think, 400.
Yeah, and you're gonna use a little bit of the existing space, correct?
I'm gonna use the whole front space.
Okay.
We're not gonna really, we're just, like, changing the heating.
Okay.
And nothing really is gonna happen to it, except for, right now it's electric heat, so we're switching to ram.
Okay, so
It's gonna drop the bat, you said, right?
Yep. Go out the So right now, there's that, this is that separate building.
Yeah.
It's attached.
Yeah, yeah.
Um
That's the main house, and there's like a little house.
Two-car garage, and then there's that little house. So we're gonna go out a door, and the new plan shows smaller space, and instead of that breakway
Yeah.
it can just go right there.
So, the shoreline protection, how many feet from the, because it says you got 325, sorry, 326 feet from the river, right? But, because it
That was from the
We had issues with tree cutting, I think, on different parts of the sediment falls.
Yeah.
It's classified as a more protected space.
Right, but she's, the building isn't gonna be as far out
I just wanna make sure she doesn't get any problems, not only the great falls.
Yeah, it's gonna be shorter, and if the trees are already down, no one has to cut trees.
So there's no tree cutting?
No.
So it's immaterial?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, really what I told her to do was, we've already gone down through the, through the entire approval process, she's going with a small building, it really did make sense to re-notice and go through the process again. I just said, come in and talk to the planning board, and
I'm trying to remember the march meeting, I'm sorry, Paul does not remember all the details of the march meeting. There was, there was no opposition?
No.
That's probably right.
No, there was no, there was no public comment whatsoever. So, that's the reason why I kind of said, we'll, we'll just go in this direction. So, we okay with this?
Yeah.
Another thing was, where our permit went till December, so because this took up so much Another thing was, where our permit went till December, so because this took up so much time to get an extension.
I don't see why not.
This is important.
What, what are you giving your session for? A home, a home business has, has a permit on it. That I don't think anyone has ever used the entire ten years this has been in place. So, um.
Thank you for following me.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say, you know, let's, let's just add another year onto it. Yeah. So, you're.
I think it was later than March.
Was it?
Cause it was my first meeting.
Did you add a year to, from today?
Yeah, a year from today.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna have it done hopefully by May.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Can I just ask, are you gonna volunteer?
We're all on.
You make no money to say that.
No, he does. He does.
I do get a stipend for being a.
And I think he does. Yeah, that's true. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You do it for a year?
I've done it for ten, it's kind of go away.
Everything week?
No, 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 once a month.
Oh.
Once a month, but, but then I have to deal with people like you, you know, multiple times a day, so. I get your emails, or applicants' emails, or other questions. Oh, I just.
We didn't have any, I, I'm not trying to stuff you.
We didn't have any, and you didn't have any concerns now?
No, no.
Do we need to do any motions, or?
I don't. You know, just, does the building inspector care if the building gets smaller? I don't think he'll care.
I think not. Well, he said, she hasn't filed for.
She hasn't filed a permit, so.
No, I did get a permit. So I guess that's what my date got.
Building permit?
Yeah.
Well, we can't extend that.
Oh, so I have to talk with him?
You can go to the select on Monday night. Bring, bring your coffee with you.
If you need an extension.
If you need one.
I do.
Any Monday night, that's when we meet.
Oh, okay.
But when did you get your building permit?
Like, right around the same time.
We didn't.
Was I, like, I thought it was at the same meeting.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be here.
Okay, and it was back to back?
No, no.
Did you have?
I paid for it.
You did?
Yeah, I have it sitting in my closet.
We'll look at it and see how, when it expires.
It expires in December.
Well, it would've been the end of the year.
The board's selecting. Girls, come see the board of selection, uh, Monday night.
What time is that?
Six thirty.
Ask her if she wants to volunteer.
I, I could volunteer.
See, the whole town is run on volunteers.
Yeah.
So there's lots of things you can do.
I just couldn't do it weekly, so.
But when you, when you come to, when you come to fix the issuing deadline, deadline date on your, just tell us how you would be willing to settle on that.
Okay.
On the planning board for next year, and we'll take your name, contact number, and.
So what meeting am I coming to, when's Monday, what's that called?
The select board.
Six thirty.
We start at six thirty, and the public comment period is the first part, well, we do minutes first, but the first part is where it's for the public.
Okay.
So you can just, you can be first, you don't have to sit through the entire evening.
Okay.
Alright, cool.
Do you have anything from here to go to there?
Nope, nope, you're good.
Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
Alright, um.
Oh, I would love to volunteer.
The town website. All of our personal email addresses are out there. And if you have objections to that, let us know.
You can help me with the newsletter.
Well, 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 quite frankly.
We'll talk Monday.
Okay.
Well, but, but see, we're talking. What, what my, what my thought was, was that, plan, um, planning board would go to the chair.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what I think, we, we pay that a hundred and twenty bucks a year to have a town email address.
Then have planning board members.
I think we do. I thought Suzanne suddenly had one for you.
For me?
Well, whoever the chair of the planning board is, I'll ask her on Monday night. So if that's the case, we may, she offered one, and you said no thanks, we reallocated it maybe, or?
I, you guys never, I was never.
It was my first year, so that's three years ago, so I guess.
I was, I was never asked if I wanted.
Okay, so I don't know that now, so.
So, what I would do is I would use planning board as the chair's address, okay? And then, and then you'd have planning board members or something like that, as all the other members would.
We have the, the capability though, too, where we're on the website, where folks can click the link. So when they click to email the entire select board, they can just email all of us, and give our, when you click on it, well, they're gonna give all of our.
I, what, what I would encourage, what I would encourage you to.
Um, to totally break in and, and just try this. So there is a planning board at Rollinsford dot N H dot U S.
There is.
Yeah.
Okay, but I don't think that's active.
But it, it, I just saw an email from you, to that address that came, so that address goes to me.
We'll try it right now.
You look.
Okay.
So I guess this email must go to some of us. Did you get enough of that?
So there was a planning, that, that, there used to be a planning at Rollinsford N H dot U S. That, that might have. Okay, he must have set it up, and that.
This is set up as your, as your email.
Right, okay. There was, there was planning, okay, a long time ago, there was planning at Rollinsford blah, blah, blah. Okay, now there is, there is planning board, okay? That's the one I take, okay? What I'm encouraging the board, the, the select board to do is somebody, I don't care what it is, okay? Is to set up a mail alias that is planning board members that can only be used by the planning board members.
I, I think the problem that I have with, and I don't know how all of our email addresses got put on the website. The problem I've got with it is that it's inappropriate for an applicant to communicate with the board as a whole.
Yes.
If a head wants to distribute, or whoever the chairman is, wants to distribute information, then that's.
Exactly.
So I, I, I think it would be wise to have a David Town. I think so. Um, you know, and I, I, mine's been up there for a long time, and I don't think I've ever gotten emailed, so it's not like it's, it bothers them.
Part of the, okay, so, it's not the actual town's website, which is part of the problem, because it's hosted by a volunteer, or by a volunteer, paid for by a volunteer. So, but we, we'll, we'll have her as our webmaster, I mean, take them down, so I'm.
I can text her right now, I don't know.
Yeah, just have her. Except, except for.
Yeah, the chair should remain, and then the members, then, and, and, and the consultant, because it's probably inappropriate to, unless.
I don't mind.
Yours can stay on?
I don't care. It doesn't, I mean, I don't, you know, everybody knows my, all the, they're all being, all the engineers and stuff.
Those are the only people that are really gonna judge.
I got a email on a situation on Third Street. There used to be a mobile home.
Yes.
On a lot.
Yep.
Somebody's bought.
They have?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they wanna put up a duplex on it.
Well, that, and I'll honestly, that is the place, if you're going to build one, that is where it probably should be.
Well, to tell you the truth, if you don't want duplexes in suburban residential and, and those, you gotta pull that out.
I agree with you.
That's the reason, that's what's gonna get us in a bunch of trouble.
At the end of the meeting, so, a number changes, and that's a make, right?
So anyway, um, so, I guess that lot, we, it's really the, the, to build on that, they just need to basically follow the setbacks on the properties adjacent to it, right?
I know it's in the Bull's district, right?
Third Street is right back over here.
So, seaward water, seaward water?
So what about parking? There's, there's.
That's, that's a concern when we're racing them, and I think, it sounds like it's a fairly deep lot, it's a hundred and ten feet deep, so what they should do is, you know, what I, what I'm gonna encourage them to do is to put their parking in the back.
I can, I can recall, it is pretty deep.
Long as it's around the back.
The house next to it has a car coming back.
Yeah, so those, so I'm gonna tell them that, you know, the lot is.
One of our biggest problems.
Yeah. Minutes. Everyone review them?
Of course we did.
I did actually.
I did actually, too. Alright, uh, motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Okay, all those are favors, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, correspondences, I didn't see anything in the room. I noticed people are moving a lot of stuff around in the planning office. I noticed a table disappeared. You know, we, we lost an application. Last, the, the job and application disappeared. And I kinda came back, and I was looking around, and I ended up finding it, but, uh, you know, people are really messing around in there, you know. I know it's a mess, and I'm a slob, and that I don't maintain things to the, to the satisfaction of town hall employees, but, you know, in my copious free time.
Okay, so, I will mention that, if, if things get moved, they need to be put back, or, or put in a place where people can find.
Yes.
I would imagine they're getting, well, the conservation commissioners had to meet in there because of, and the supervisor checklist had to meet in there.
Well, they've always had that table in the middle, and that's.
I think that the supervisors had to move the furniture around for whatever reason, they were meeting the same.
Alright, I would like us to do a, um, workshop on the fifteenth.
Okay, so we're not canceled on that?
Of, of November?
November.
Okay, that's gonna be zoning initiatives. Um, so, what we, you know, maybe we, we wanna pull duplexes out of the, of the S R S O, uh, and, you know, countryside residential. We also need to deal with the blue and mail.
What's going on there?
Well, they, they're in the process of renovating it, so their places.
Yeah, that's the.
Well, there's, I, but they, I, I believe they are gonna wanna do residential.
Do we know if they're doing renovations on, in the interior?
Have they backed it off?
No, he's only doing office spaces.
But, but, the point is, he only has a permit to, to do exterior work. He doesn't have a permit, so you're putting in new windows, he has a permit for that, and do exterior. He doesn't have a permit for any interior work, so if we know he's doing that, we need to have a conversation with him.
Okay, but I know that the, when you and I met with him back about a year ago, we were talking about some residential uses.
Upstairs, and wanted commercial downstairs.
Yeah. Do we wanna do those zoning changes?
When he even came before the Z B A, he said it was just office space.
For now, yeah.
For now.
He didn't put the question for now.
Really? And maybe he has changed his mind, then. It's not cost effective for him.
Can you, can you, do you have his address?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
You want it?
And I'm just gonna drop him an email and say, hey, we're, we're coming up on zoning time, you know, what do you need, what are you planning? You know, blah, 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 blah.
Because our, our, our initial conversation was much like what was the Mill District, we wanted some mixed use, so. We need to make changes.
What is it, that was manufacturing, warehousing?
Yes.
So, I mean, what's the town's position if it switches to offices, is that okay? Or is that a change of use that we require a plan for approval?
I would say yes. There, there was some other space, but not.
There's some.
Yeah. I think, I think, the challenge that we're gonna have with that site is gonna be parking. And how, how's parking gonna be done?
It's got, the lot, the front's got a lot in back, right?
Well.
Now, the lot back isn't a lot, that's the apartment building.
That's, okay, so it's not his.
Well, no, well, no, there's, there's quite a bit of room behind that building, but it's not.
You'd get to that with.
You get to it off Church Street. Not on Church Street, you get to it off of.
Railroad.
Mill Road, yeah. Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, type of ride. Every once in a while, you see a tractor trailer going down Railroad Street, you think. It's going behind.
Yeah. But, you know, I think there's gonna need to be some level of improvements to that, that site. So it's gonna be site work, it's gonna have to happen. That's, that's my concern.
Yeah.
John, can you develop a, we have talked about a way that minor updates to site plans don't have to come through the full board.
You wanna do that after zoning? You wanna do zoning first in case of any issues, or you wanna do that now?
Just, well, wouldn't that be part of zoning?
No. No, it'd be a site plan rewrite.
Would it?
Yeah, just a public hearing, fire.
Okay, alright. I won't be around on that, so.
Maybe we can get that done now. You got it done?
I can do it now, but I'd rather, but if you're concentrating on zoning now, I think that'd be your priorities, to get that done, because it's time sensitive.
Well, probably what, what we might wanna do is, maybe, I, I know that you're screaming about the fees.
You wanna cover costs?
Yeah, the town is, is, um, losing money.
Well, we're losing money on the.
I don't know why they shouldn't pay.
We wanna, I'd say the select board definitely wants to at least cover our costs.
Well, and, and, you know, what, what.
Paying for my time.
And your time, right.
So, so what I would like you to do is to come up for a, a fee schedule.
Okay.
That will cover our costs.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ready for the fifteenth.
Okay.
Okay?
Of this month?
Of this month. We mean here, obviously, yes.
Is that across the board, site plan subdivision?
Yep.
Yep.
Who sets the fee schedule? I don't even know.
I think it's.
Is it Plankton or the first one?
No, it's, it's part of our site.
It's, it's part of the.
Yeah, that's the, right, right.
Yeah, and it's not, um, there's no fee schedule in the zoning ordinance, or the zoning.
That's another issue.
Yeah, so that needs to be included, too.
So that would have, actually have to go before.
This is gonna be across the board, though, butters, and an application fee.
But I think it should be added to the zoning, because if the zoning's gonna be online.
I would rather reference it, not, and, you know, I would rather, because otherwise, every time we change it, we'd have to go to town meeting, so if we reference it, then we can just change it whenever, you know, because if, if, you know, a certified mail will go up, we wanna be able to show it. And, and I, it's, I don't, what does a certified letter cost now?
It's six thirty-four.
So maybe it's ten bucks a piece just to cover your time, I, whatever, whatever. I think you should be making money on it, but you shouldn't be losing it.
Yeah, right now, we're at seven, but the times that I send.
Now at all.
I, I would encourage you to set the, set a fee, put it as one entire thing that covers.
Okay.
Per, per person, male, you know, how much is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's a dollar, it's, it's reasonable, and I mean, it's pretty much going right without that as well.
Alright, anyone have anything to? Yes, I'll, I'll. I thought we would be here till around ten tonight. Shut it down. Motion to.